Any to order? We'll call, it's like everybody's here except for Heidi.
As far as I know, she was coming.
Okay, alright, well, we can see. Any additions to the agenda?
No additions, couple corrections though.
Yep.
One is if you look under number six on the second page, under consent agenda. In our wisdom, I forgot to change it to perennial bank for farmers and merchants state banks, so that should be perennial bank. And then on the second page under business, I missed an L for Colleen Pelton. So if you just correct that to C-O-L-L-E-E-N.
Business, you said?
That's it? On business, sorry. Yep, number five. Or six? No, five.
Oh, right.
On business.
Five, on business.
Yep.
Two Ls.
Two Ls. Two Ls.
With those corrections, I will look at the agenda.
I have a comment. I have a motion from Cheryl and a second from Bruce. Any other further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, and carry. District 741 is proud of the baseball team for winning section three double A in baseball and qualifying for 2016 state baseball tournament. And also for Coach Brad Schoolen for being named section three double A coach of the year for 2016 baseball season. So, congrats to those guys. Anybody here for public comment? I do get one. So Rick, do you want to come down to the microphone?
Didn't know I had that effect on Bruce. Pastor Rick Aine, retired, and I'm here tonight representing the Haynesville Ministerial Association. I want to thank you on behalf of the Ministerial Association for your cooperation in what I consider to be a miracle. We have had now, for, this will be the third summer, we've had a community vacation Bible school. Catholics, Lutherans, Assemblies of God, pre church, and the Methodist coming together. And I'm telling you, it's a miracle because talked to pastors of other communities around the state and they're jealous and they're in awe that we pull this off. It's a credit to the churches, but it's also, we want to thank the school for cooperating because when we first thought about this, we thought about where can we hold this? We want it to be a neutral site, obviously. And whether it's elementary school, which is preferable, and we've been able to do it there now for three years, where the kids are familiar with the building, most of them, and it's just a great experience. If you don't, haven't heard, in the last two years, we've had over 200 kids each summer and we have had close to, if not over, 100 youth and adult helpers. That's 300. I don't know what the population of the school is during school year day, uh, during the school year, but that's probably pretty close to it. And so we want to thank Bob's cooperation. Matt's been tremendous in helping us out. We thank David down at school. I'm sure it's not easy having that happen all of a sudden in the middle of summer when they're trying to get ready for the school year, but it has been a real godsend. We want to thank you again for your cooperation. This is something that doesn't happen in very many communities and it just, uh, it just says a lot about Haynesville. It's a lot about the way we cooperate as churches, community, with the school and everything. So again, just want to thank you on behalf of the ministerial for your cooperation. And week after next, I believe, with your Bible school.
Alright, good. It's always nice to hear some positiveness coming out of the community. So, thank you, Rick. So we're going to go and move on to approving the minutes from the June 28th, 2016 regular order meeting and also the July 14th, 2016 special order meeting. And that was in your packet, which you got. Can we commercially approve the minutes from both meetings? Okay, so I have a motion from Bruce and a second from Kala. Any other further discussions? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, and carry. Financial reports. The June treasury report, it's in your packet. Bob, is there anything?
Just be aware that when you look at the Haynesville Public Schools revenue summary, it says period ending June 30th, 2016. That's, we're still working on that and telling you that if you're processing on that, that's why those numbers will change. So just be aware of that. And that would be about it. I think the one below it, the period ending June of 2015, that's pretty much set right now. That one will not change much. And the example of food service, we just did quite, give us quite as many, much revenue as we thought we would get. That's why that's a negative.
Are we seeing less lunches purchased?
I don't know if it was less lunches purchased or, I just don't know. I'd have to do a little bit more checking on that mark to see exactly why it went down. I talked with Joan a little bit, it's just, we assumed we would get the revenue, so that would probably, most likely be because we had less lunches purchased. You have to remember that. Now, some of you, kids are getting free and stuff, but at the same time.
It may be worthwhile just checking into it and seeing once where we are and where we compared two years past.
Sure.
Just a, more of a FYI, so we can kind of budget accordingly for that.
Yep, we can do that. And I think for those, that would be about probably a...
Can we commercially approve the June's treasury report? And we'll get the final in next.
Yeah, so does we do our end of the year switch over.
One second. So we got a motion from Bruce and a second from Lou. Any other further discussions? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, and carry. Audit approval of the bills, the additional June 2016 bills and July 2016 bills. And Cheryl, you had the opportunity, I'm sure you did.
Yes, I was in the sack this morning in the bills. I had a couple of things that really caught my eye. The Leaker County auditor thing. We over, uh, we were, how did that go, Bob?
Which one are we talking about?
The auditor. We overpaid.
Over?
We overpaid him the $54,000.
Oh, okay, that one I didn't, which one are you talking about? We didn't talk about that. You must have talked about that one, Joan.
Leaker County auditors.
Oh, yeah, we got a bill from them.
Yep.
And just, they gave us too much money, so they took it back.
Is what happened. Instead of charging us twice at like 53,000 something, they charged us once for the whole amount and then once for the 54,000 something. So we ended up having to pay them back, you can see it in here somewhere, $54,206.
In essence, they just, they really gave us too much money.
Okay. So we had that money to use for a while and now we had to give it back.
Yes, I don't know why they asked for it, but they did, and we did pay them, pay them back. And that would be ordinary, yes.
And computer services, we had to pay those, the normal licenses and upgrades that we do every year that came out now. We had first payment on the scoreboard of $5,000 on the scoreboards that are going in outside. It's ongoing with the building improvements, another $6,400 to Yule, that comes out of building bond. And we start, we put some of the pads up in the wrestling room. That was a $5,000. And there's something, I'm going to let someone else talk about it, but West Central Ed also was wonderful.
Lou is at the meeting also. What has happened is that we need to make a $25,000 adjustment to what we had paid West Central Ed. Lori's very good, she's the head of the West Central Ed district that works for us, and she did some real digging into how the special ed funding works. And in that process, she found a glitch on the way they were billing out to schools, and as a result, our rep, our reserve fund has been going down. And all of the schools, to clean things up a little bit, did get an extra bill to make up some of that loss that they didn't get. That would be about it. Lou, I think that's pretty low.
It was kind of complicated, but she did a real good job of explaining.
So we needed to pay them the $25,000. Every school got a different bill depending upon the use of their buildings or their school district with special, or students going to the LCMB program, so it was necessary to do that. And it's either pay them upfront or pay them in this, on the backside in this case, we just paid them yet.
Now, is that something that we get reimbursed through the special ed or on the backside?
You get some of that through there, but not all of this. This is just getting them caught up to what we should have been paying them in the first place.
Okay.
So I'm assuming that Lori took care of all the reimbursement and that kind of stuff before she sent all the deal. And if there is any additional stuff, it'll go in the West Central Ed, which helps offset our costs in a few years' time.
Those were the things that I noted, otherwise it looked like business as usual, and I would make the motion that we take care of the bills.
There was one other thing that Cheryl and I talked about, and that was the yearbook. You'll notice that on page, it'd be, the second page of it, on page two of four, the yearbook is highlighted there, it's written in there, it's $9,678. That's what it cost us to produce the yearbook. We're not in a hole that much, but we did end up offsetting the cost of the yearbook by a couple thousand dollars this year. There were a few things that happened that caused there to be an overrun, and Lori and I have talked about it, Lori has talked about it with the yearbook advisor and stuff, and they will correct that for future use. But I think those are kind of the main pieces, just to let the rest of the board know. And one other thing that you also is there, remember Joan is going to give you this report every once in a while, and that's the summary for the activities. So you can take a look at that. And again, the yearbook piece, if you look on the second page, it says page one of one, but it's the second green page on that. The yearbook, you'll see us having taken $2,094 out. There was $2,094.47 in there, but the deal is, is that everyone, you know, they'll gain a little bit of money over years, so they can purchase a camera or something else. But the deal is, when something happens where they don't make enough money, then the general fund takes that. And even with us taking that, then there's, there's still a couple thousand that they need to take a look at and audit correct in the future. But all of that, we'll be taking care of for next year. But I think that you both.
I just got one question, because I'm curious about this Dom's bus service. What did he, what was that in his book?
Oh, are we talking Dom, the 104,000?
No, not 100, it's Dom's.
On which pages?
Dom's buses.
Oh, I think, I think that was transporting, I'm not 100% sure, Lou and I'll have to check, but I thought that they transported fans one time.
Oh.
So remember now, we have to run it through our pieces here, and then we get reimbursed back into those payments. That was one of the things that the auditors found, is that you just can't take straight out and pay for it. It has to run, all, everything has to run for our activities, and then we are reimbursed. So we paid them, then we get the money in for fans, for instance, if they did, but I think that's what that was for. Yep, one last thing, just as a reminder, I think I mentioned it the last time. Under the last sheets again, of period ending June 30th, 2016, very last page, or second to last page, page three of four, again, you've got 104,000 in the hole. I talked about that last time, I just wanted to remind the board that really, that's just a special ed, we moved that money into there, but we do have the amount in our budget for that. But we do move everything as much to special ed as we can, so that we get reimbursed for the transportation. So you don't have to worry about us being the whole 104,000 or having not budgeted enough.
I got a motion from Cheryl to approve those. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, so we got a second from Randy. Any other further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, and carry. Consent agenda. We have three.
Yeah, this is the normal July one that we do all of those approvals.
So what we're, what is all in the consent agenda is we review and consider approval of the participation in the state and national school lunch program for the 2016-17. We're also consenting to review and consider authorization, authorizing the superintendent and his or her, his, designate to purchase and sell investments as needed during the 2016-17 school year. Review and consider designating the school district supplement bank depositors for the 2016-17 school year, and that would be the Minnesota School District Liquidity Assets Fund Plus, and then the PMA Financial Network, Inc., or the PMA Security, Inc., various banks and savings and loans across the United States with federal insurance as securities, financial management firms that provide evidence of appreciative securities. And number four is we view and consider authorizing the following personnel for signing penny cash checks during the 2016-17 school year. And we have the bookkeeper, payroll specialist, district office administrative assistant, and then the superintendent. We also are consenting to review and consider designating the Haynesville Press as the school district official newspaper for the 2016-17 school year. Number six, reviewing, consider designating the school district primary bank depositors for 2016-17 year. Payroll will go to Central Minnesota Credit Union. General accounts will go to Bank of the West, and activities account goes to perennial banks, which was the old farmers and merchants. Number seven, review and considering authorizing the following personnel to initiate or, and authorize banking transactions during the 2016-17 school year. We have the bookkeeper, payroll clerk, district office administrative assistant, superintendent, and community ed. Number eight, review and consider listing the board chair, the board clerk, and the board treasurer as best, maximal signatures for payroll and accounts payable checks. Number nine, review and consider approval of the following athletic assignments for the 2016-17 school year. Cross country is Christine Waifel. Head coach for volleyball is Nicole Hummer. Assistant coaches for volleyball are Kelly Kleinschetz and Kayla Meyer. Kayla's a new hire, right?
She's a new hire, correct.
Okay. Junior high coaches are Jackie Spanier and Bill Hesse. Head coach for football is Max Baughart. His assistant coaches are John Kiefler, Ron Fokes, Chad Campbell, and Todd Spanier. Junior high football coaches are Brad Schoolen, Phil Carlson, and Tracy Heepenberger. Heepenberger's his new.
She's a new hire.
Okay.
Just a couple things for the board. The board has had to go through the complete process that Lori has addressed for hiring. Also, if you remember, we have a lot more assistants now because we got rid of the, we really moved the ninth grade coaches to the assistant level because they were putting in every bit as time, as much time in as the assistant coaches were, so we moved that. And then one last thing that's in your denim is that we do anticipate getting enough high enough numbers who aren't filling the assistant junior high cross country coach. But we do want to verify that before we hire somebody. So you may get that part coming back to you, so that we can hire an assistant coach for that. We're hoping we get enough numbers, that would be great for us.
So that's the consent agenda. We can do it all in one motion.
Please motion to approve this.
I'll second.
We have a motion from Lou and a second from Heidi. Any other further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, and carry. Under business now, anybody in the public or in the audience, if they have any questions, please raise your hand and I'll call by you. First one is review and consider approval of the fee schedule for the 2016-17 school year. And Bob, I think you have some.
Yeah, we'll go through this today, and certainly I'll answer any questions that you have. I am going to ask the board to table this at the end, because there is at least one question that we still need answered. We thought we would get that information by now. It won't hurt for us to wait till the August meeting. Our registration is the day after the board meeting in August, so that would be enough time to verify everything. But if there's a problem where you see anything, I certainly would want that brought up now, because we're probably going to continue to go through and get ready for registration and look at using the fees unless there's an issue that the board has. If you look at admissions, those have stayed the same. The dates have been changed. The activity passes, now again, no changes for B. C, the athletic participation fees, again, no changes for that. We did change the wording and format a little bit. Hockey is 400 per participant per year, but it does not qualify for the family maximum. We did add that in. We wanted it to be clear for all the member, the families who participate in hockey. Indeed, non-athletic participation fees, those remain the same also. So up to this point, no fees have changed. Ah, correct, thank you. Just mentioned, we did, if you'll see cheerleading is crossed out in your copy. We just haven't had a team, so we removed it from there. Now, it still stays in the staff handbook, and if we ever have one again, it'll just go back to that, but for now, we didn't. And as pointed out again, we did add trap shooting, because that's now an activity that we have. Alright? Okay, non-athletic participation fees, no changes there. Student parking, we're going to gather a little bit more information on that if we have a little more time, so that's one thing we are going to discuss yet between now and the second meeting, now that we're tabling this. So just be aware of that. So I'll bring that back, and we'll come back kind of with a recommendation on that. The bill fees, the elementary is going up 10 cents, and remember, that's because we have to meet a minimum amount, and as long as we don't hit that minimum amount that we hit, I think it's $2.78. So I think that was the last amount that we got from the federal government for the food, for the reimbursing that they helped us with. Until we hit that, we have to keep raising it, and the minimum I can raise it is 10 cents. So that's why we keep adding the 10 cents to that. No other changes on the top part of that, go to the backside. Lunch fees for middle school, again, the 10 cents. And the adult, that's the question that we have. I don't want to raise the fees unless I have to. So we have not gotten that number from the feds yet. We expected to get it. I know that if we had the meeting today, guess when I'll get this?
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow. So, but I'm waiting for that particular number. If we don't have to raise it, we're not going to. If we have to raise it, then we'll do that, and we won't have to come back to the board to change it. Breakfast fees for elementary remain the same. Middle school remain the same. The adult, we knew we didn't have to raise that though. So that's gone up to about 70, and again, we may even have to raise that more, depending on what we get from the feds. Any questions up to this point?
The parking fees, is that per student or per vehicle?
It's, it's per student, they get a pass though, so I think they can move that sticker to whatever cars they want, yeah.
I was just curious.
Yeah, if a student gets admitted, whatever vehicle they bring in, they would be able to move a pass to that vehicle. School district bill allowances, in some ways, they're low. To tell you the truth, the ones that probably get hit the hardest with that are my board members when they go to the cities, because they're low at the cities and they probably work out every place also. Now that we're going to, at least my suggestion to the board is that we table this, certainly you can think about that. We have not increased that for a period of time. But again, I look at those amounts, and I think if I was eating in Haynesville, that'd be just fine. But if I was eating in the cities, then it's not enough. So, but my recommendation, at least at this point, is that we leave it as is. Mileage, we left the same, just because gas has stayed pretty low, so we haven't looked at increasing that. Student athletic bus to out of town activities, that's all stayed the same as from last year. And here's where we start making some changes. I told the board before that we've been low, and I think even with the changes that I'm making here and recommending, I think you'll see this come up every year, that we need to continue to increase this. So for this year, and minimum wage goes up to 950. Substitute teachers, we're going to go from 95 to 105. And a lot, a lot of districts are sitting in this range, what I don't know is if they'll raise it to go even higher than us, but I think for us to make that jump this year, and if we have to continue to make the jump, we're going to have to look at that and work into the budget. And then for any subs employed beyond 10 days, we went from 100 to 110. That kind of brings us into the pack from the old numbers that we had anyway. Substitute clerical, we're going from 950 to 10. Band instrumental rentals stay the same. Custodian substitute from 10 to 1050. Hair professional from 950 to 10. Food service from 950 to 10. And van drivers from 10 to 1050. I just increased everything by 50 cents. And again, I don't think that's going to solve the problem. I think you're going to see me come back again and make another recommendation next year.
Is there, with the band instrument rental fee, it kind of seems like it's in a goofy spot. Is there any reason why that can't be?
Moved up.
Moved up to like, are the non-athletic participation fees like under D and put? Just because it kind of seems like it's, you have all the substitutes, and then right in the middle of it is the band rental. Yeah, but it just would make more sense to move.
So we'll move that to D then. So it'll be a little bit of a different format, but we'll move it someplace where you think, did you? If that's right? Yep, we can do that. Anything else, any concerns that you see? I just think we need to continue to move those, at least in the right direction.
We have a struggle to find substitutes, and so I think if this can help us get some good quality substitutes.
I think we're going to have to continue to increase it, and I do look at doing that every year, I think, with the teachers that gets us in the pack. So at least if they're close to this area, it's close enough so that they'll probably stay here rather than spend the gas money and the travel time to go some other place. So we'll continue to look, we'll collect the data again this year to take a look at all of these. And then next year, when we vote on this again, we'll, we'll take a look at that and see what we can do. But I do think we need to continue to look at increasing those of these for now. But again, my suggestion to the board is to table this until we get the rest of the information and bring it back to the August, I think, update. Ninth, I think, meeting.
Ninth, yeah.
Yep, because registration's.
Um, do we need, we don't need a motion to table it?
How hard are we? No, I don't think, I never.
Just take a motion.
Table. I think you just say you're going to table it. If it's in agreement with the board, we'll table it and we'll bring it back for voting.
Okay, so it's tabled. Number two underneath business is review and consider approval of membership with Minnesota School Board Association for the 2016-17 school year.
It's a $54 increase from last year. It's been a great organization for us. The trainings that board members have gone to, I think are invaluable.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second that.
So I got a motion from Bruce and a second from Kala. Any other further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by aye.
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 Both same sign, and carry. Review and consider approval of the 2016-17 student chair extracurricular handbook.
Absolutely no changes other than dates. Otherwise Matt would be here explaining why the need for changes, but in this case, just
So I'll second that one. I got a motion from Heidi and a second from Bruce. Any other further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, and carry. Number four, review and consider approval of our membership with C M E R E C for the 2016-17 school year.
They open with Mars on support, finance, payment, and trainings on, very important that we continue this.
Make a motion to approve.
I'll second it.
You got a motion from Lou and a second from Cheryl. Any other further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, and carry. Number five, review and consider approval of a plaque to honor Colleen Pelton.
Yeah, we had talked about this at our previous board meeting, and I guess Matt is here to answer any questions if you have it. He did, did manage to get the two L's in there. Did you want to come forward and talk a little bit?
If they have any questions, do you have the picture to put up top too, or the?
Oh, no, I did not scan, and I wish I would have.
Is there any questions about it? We raised the money, we, our plan, I know. Yeah, we raised enough money for the plaque, and our plan is to unveil it August twenty-eighth. The Painsville Community Theater is doing a tribute to the Peltons, and that's actually would have been Colleen's birthday. So three o'clock, tickets are going to go on sale August first, and get your tickets fast, because that probably will, there's only one show for that, and it's going to be a highlight of all the years of community theater. Original cast from those shows coming back, so it should be a good event. It's from the exact same company that used for E N's. They'll be facing each other when you put them together, so their faces will be right next to each other when the plaques are. It'll be a perfect match, so.
And what I'll do is, that was a great idea, I should, wish I would have known that. During my reports, next time I'll show the community what the plaque looks like, so I'll make sure I scan it at the next board meeting during my reports, we can let the community know.
Any questions about the plaque, or?
Looks great. I'll make a motion to approve.
So we got a motion from Bruce and a second from Kella. Any other further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, and carry. All right, so we're going to be moving on now to the personnel. Review and consider approval of the resignation of Polly Jaeger, administrative assistant. I think she's in elementary school, right?
She is, and I really didn't want to put some of these on the agenda tonight. She's done since we an outstanding job for us. I cannot say enough about the people who are on here as far as their resignations, to all of them, I wish them well, and we will miss them greatly, but they've done an outstanding job for our district.
You don't have to approve it.
I don't know how I drag her from her new position to our place every day, but she's done outstanding.
So I got a motion from Cheryl and a second from Bruce. Any other further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, and carry. Review and consider approval of the resignation of Jason Rohoff, maintenance slash custodial for effective July fifteenth, two thousand sixteen.
Again, wasn't with us as long as Polly, but he's done an outstanding job while he's with us.
I'm motion to approve it.
Second. So I got a motion from Lou and a second from Bruce. Any other further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, and carry. Review and consider approval of the resignation of Donovan Luer, fitness center effective August fifteenth, two thousand sixteen.
I haven't worked with Donovan as far as, he's been here for a while, hasn't he?
Yeah, he's doing a great job going off to college, so.
Yeah, that happens.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
So we got a motion from Heidi and a second from Cheryl. Any other further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, and carry. Review and consider approval of hiring Ben Borgensen, Borgender? Borging, Borging?
Borging.
Borging, Borging. White A F T E, V I A N position, effective August twenty-ninth, two thousand sixteen. This is contingent on his getting his Minnesota teaching license, so he must be a new grad?
Um, he's coming in from a different state.
Oh, okay.
So we don't see any issues, but it is, just wanted to make sure that it is on there that it is contingent on that particular piece, and it's not a new position, it's just replacing a resignation.
So we got a motion from Heidi.
Second.
And a second from Randy. All in favor, or any other further discussions? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, and carry. Number five, marketing will provide a summary of superintendent's evaluation. We, if you remember the last board meeting, we did take, we ended to close session at about six twenty-three P M underneath the statute for us to do the superintendent's evaluation. Through that evaluation, we were using, or we did use a program required for all administrators' licenses, it's a statute three five one two dot zero five one zero. And it, there's a lot to this here statute that all, the core leadership competencies for all Minnesota super, or superintendents or administrators go through. So what we did is we kind of just got together for about an hour and a half and discussed what was good and bad or indifference throughout the year that Bob was a leader of. So we kind of basically broke it down into each chapter. One was the leadership, and I don't think there's, any one of the board members had any problems with any of his leadership styles or the way that he handled himself throughout the years. And I kind of went ahead and, for my own sake, to put it on a graph of some sort, it's, I kind of rated from distinguished, accomplished, satisfied, and unsatisfactory. And I, we, we as a group came up with the four, which is distinguished, because I think he's, he's really led us into the, into a really good position as a district. We had some financial constraints going into his leadership or his tenure here, and he's been miraculously changed things around just by his leadership style, being very upfront with everybody and exactly what we all needed to do and stuff like that, whether it was from the custodians all the way up to the administrators. So kudos to you in the, in that leadership role that you presented to us. The other area that we looked at is, is his management and strategies and strategic planning process. Well, we did accomplish that this year, so again, very distinguished marks on that by all members of the board. He's excelled in, in that, in that regard. So again, I think that kind of speaks highly of a lot of things that he's done for us in the community here, so. The other place we evaluated him on is his policy and law, and there's some areas of, obviously, that with policies, there's never ending. I mean, policies change at the state level, at the federal level continuously, so we're always working on getting that accomplished and looking at the different laws and stuff like that. So it's, so again, we still rated him as, as distinguished for that, for that piece that he's, he's brought to us, you know? He's keeping us abreast of everything that is going on in the, in the world of education, and so that's, speaks very highly of, of his knowledge and his commitment to our school system. The other area is communications. I don't think we've been, we would have got to where we are today if it wasn't for his communications to everybody, from, from the public to his administrators, to his team, to us. I think, again, very distinguished comments on, by all members of the board, so again, thank you for, for everything that you do for us. The last, the last area that we kind of struggle with of, you know, obviously, he's done a very good job for everything that he's done here. One thing that, you know, we can always, you know, there's always one thing that we can probably learn a little bit on, and he knows it, I don't even have to say it too often to him, and that's delegation. Delegation is one of those areas, as an administrator, it's very hard to do. I don't care what position that you're in, if you want to make sure that everything is done to the right fashion, that's your expectations are. So he fails a little bit on, on delegating that part of his job. We encourage him to continue working on that, but again, if you look at that as maybe a little flaw, still, he's still doing a distinguished job for us here in Painsville. So his overall rating was a four, I gave him for being distinguished, and I don't think, unless it's somebody else on the board here wants to contradict it, but I doubt it, because like I said, we, we talked about this very fluently for an hour and a half, and so thank you, Bob, for everything you did for us this year. And hopefully that, well, in my next breath hold, we are going to be convening our administrative team to look at his contract, because as we all know, his contract is due at the end of this fiscal year. And so we're going to convene to start looking at some proposals and where Bob wants to be in the next year or so. So I don't think I need a motion on that, I just need to.
Does, is, is our, the board's do that, I can reconvene that committee, because it's a board committee, and just set a date when the board's ready to do that, so.
I think that would be probably a good, good thing for you to do, is convene it, and then you can start working on a plan for next contract year, or two, or five. We can go from there. Does anybody else on the board here have anything to say about what I might have missed or not emphasized on?
Good job.
Yep, good job.
Nice job, brother.
All right, well.
Thank you, Bob.
Thank you, Bob.
Thanks, brother.
So that concludes the evaluation process. Again, like I said, we convened back at eight thirty P M that night, so like I said, it was a well thought-out, very constructive meeting for all parties, so. With that, I'm going to go into informational reports. We'll start with administrative reports. Robert Hewitt.
Just a few things. Again, as I mentioned last time, summer continues to go faster and faster, and it won't be the end, we'll be at the end of July or so. Elementary school, we are waiting until after the Bible camp, until we do that gym floor at elementary school, we're getting that set up, so that soon as the camp is done, we get in there, do the elementary gym. If you haven't had a chance, do step into the high school gym when you get a chance to look at that, hopefully the elementary school will turn out just as nice. I don't think that elementary school's floor has ever been redone. I don't think the high school one was redone. So I think it'll, it'll really make the gym space look a lot better. Still working on Q C O P, we're getting closer, but every time we seem to answer a question, we seem to get another question back. So I've got one question sitting on my desk that I will present to M D E tomorrow, and we're hoping that that will be the last question that we have to answer. If not, I'll be back in August saying, there was another question. But we're getting pretty close. We believe that it will be approved, and that we'll get a letter of approval from M D E, and once that happens, then it'll come to the board. Your approval, the staff have already voted on this, so they're fine with it. So it's just a board approval and M D E's approval, and then we're ready to go. We still have a lot of work to do in it, to get it all set up, kind of nuts and bolts pieces that we need to put in place so that it all works efficiently. Continue to work on action steps, we did give the board an update at the last meeting at the work session, just kind of just an update on where we were. Board gave us some input, now I've got another meeting for our committee to meet, and just put some more action steps in place once those are done. At least remember, it's a working document, could change from month to month during the year, but we'll bring it back to the board at a board meeting, present the action steps to the board, just as informational piece, so that the community also understands what we're doing. We talked, I just got off the phone today with U S Department of Education, our reserve center. We're going to try something different, as, as the board remembers, we did put eighty thousand dollars into that budget to buy the, the property. I was given a little light at the end of the tunnel, I'm going to send a couple reports that I need to, to the U S Department of Ed, but I need to do a utilization report, and I'm going to try to put some changes in there on what we're looking at. And at least again, I saw a light at the end of the tunnel that I'm going to start going towards, that maybe we can just change some things and not pay the additional dollars. We'll see. You know, so I'm going to start that this week as far as getting that utilization report, I told her I'd get it to her by Monday, so I asked her about next week anyway, so I have some work to get to this week on that. Let's see, okay, so we're, we're just going to have to wait and see, I'll keep the board informed on that. We just put together a newsletter that'll be going out to the whole community, when is that? I figured that mailing date about, about July thirty-first it'll go out. We finally got a bid for the netting to go above the playground at the stadium. We're going to get to it as quick as I can, it's been one heck of an adventure just for us to get a bid. We got the bid, we can only get one bid, so this will be one of those times when I don't have more than one bid, falls with, well within the, the minimum that we need to do to even, I think, get a couple bids. So we're going to get it up as quick as we can. What I don't know is if we're going to be able to get it done in a couple weeks when we have that amateur baseball tournament. We're going to have a couple signs put up at the entrances where the people come into that, just come shoot ball ball area. We'll get the netting up if we can, if we can't, it'll just, we'll get it in there as fast as we can. And so our biggest issue probably now is that we have to get the pipes ordered, and we have to get the netting ordered, and we're just not sure whether we'll get those quick enough in order to have it in place by the time that tournament comes. We wish we could have moved this along faster, but we've had a heck of a time just finding one place that's going to be willing to do it. If you're on the policy committee, I'm going to be setting up the amount. Was not very much as far as the cost, it was less than four thousand. Okay, we're not going to attach to the building, though, it's just going to be freestanding on its own. That saved us some dollars for, for the netting. We could always add that, I think, at a later time if we wanted to, but for now, we're not. If you're on the policy committee, just be aware, start of August, mid-August, we're going to be coming to that committee with some policies to look at. We're going to look at the hiring policy, I've talked to the board about that, there's a couple policies we need to put in place, so that'll all come out hopefully at that first or second meeting in August, and then we'll move those forward. And then registration date is August tenth, three to seven.
Yeah, the netting, does it come down in the minutes?
Um, I think most places, just the.
So you just put it up and we're good?
Yep.
I think it's a good thing that you got that close, whether we get it or not. Some little kid gave me right on top of the head from a foul ball coming down from a hundred and fifty feet in the air, I just, makes me nervous.
I wish we could have gotten this, it's just been, we've been waiting on this bid from this company for at least a month.
I had a, somebody from the public called me in the sleep wondering about it, and I said, it's in motion, we're just waiting. So it's good news, so.
We, we got the bid today, he's put the order, the person has already put the order in for the, the materials. So now it's just a matter of all that. So now it's just a matter of all tasks, we get the materials and then the person has said that they'll come in and put it in as quick as we, as they can. So if we get the pipes, the pipes will be it, and if we don't get the netting, then we'll just have to wait.
So you're just going to tell everybody not to hit a foul ball that direction?
That's going to be part of that.
How big is the pool to me?
We're going to put it up twenty feet. And some of them will be lower because God would let it roll off. Yeah. Kind of a pyramid type of peaceful for that.
Good job.
Well, it's not up there yet and I wish we could've got it then sooner. There's been a frustration, we just have been after this company to, to give us a bid and I think it was something new for that company, so they wanted to make sure they got it right. It wasn't because we weren't trying to get this accomplished, because a lot of the companies that do this are either from the cities or Duluth. None of who wanted to come up here for that small project.
I don't suppose we could hire a few of the high school ball players to stand out there with their gloves?
I don't know. I'm going to keep my fingers crossed and maybe the other thing will come in and work well and we'll get it, get it up there. I don't even care if they would necessarily tighten it up the way they need to be, if it was just their idea.
Give the kids a hard hat each.
As they come to the playground, hard hat.
Hard hat area.
That might not be a bad idea. Uh, that's all I have.
All right, um, I think I'm going to, um, I'm going to add Lou's, uh, WCD, do you want to add to a meeting?
Uh, we had a meeting yesterday morning, um, Bob, fill me in here because I can get all of those. We went over the staff roster, if anybody's interested in who all works and what they do, I've got a copy of it, glad to show you. And we had a pro, a program update to the Beacon and the ALC and the summer school. We had thirty-eight students at the ALC this year and four graduated and actually there were, uh, forty to forty-five kids expected at summer school in a couple weeks.
Just, just so that everybody's aware, that's not just on a Painsville, that's all of, all going out, Roy's, Painsville and Sock Center.
And then, uh, oh, there was thirteen at the Beacon, uh, Beacon is the younger, well, not necessarily the younger kids, that's the kids with the different needs at Sock Center. And, uh, the ALC is located at Melrose, I think everyone knows that in case they don't. Uh, then we went over the non-certified handbook and the budget. And, uh, we went over the calendar and the calendars is, I didn't really like that setup too much, especially for me. The Beacon program will start, uh, the day after, well, in fact, it'll start second of September.
With Melrose?
With, at Melrose. No, that's at, uh, Sock Center. And Melrose, uh, in the ALC starts the twenty-sixth of August, so there's going to be two different.
They're following each other's calendars and Melrose starts early.
Yeah, exactly, the local schools and we have more kids going to that program, so we'll just have to deal with that when the time comes. And our next meeting is September nineteenth and Bob went over the twenty-five thousand dollar deal.
Yeah, and they also, I think, the other pieces they went over, they negotiated with their, I think, the support staff.
Yes, they did, yeah.
So they, we went over that particular piece and, and the budget that, that included.
Yep. No matter what, with that whole program over there, it's a huge savings for us here in the district.
If, if we had, if we had enough monetary. Students. Around our own program, we could, but we don't and that's, it, it just becomes a cost-efficient piece. It's a little tougher for us just because of the distance, where the other schools don't have as far to travel, we do, and it makes it a little bit more difficult for us, but with the number of students that we send there, it's by far more economical.
This past year, we had a large number of students. There are some years they had one or two, last year we had down four of them, six to seven and then.
Where, where does like the other schools send their children?
Um, there's, it depends, some have their own programs, like around St. Cloud, there's other programs that are in St. Cloud, um, either AC, GC, or EB, I can't remember, they, some of those also sent to our program, we allow them, they're not part of the WCD, but they are able to send some students to our program, WCD program. And then each group kind of does their own thing. Every school, district, there's a number of different co-ops, like ours around the state that other schools.
And you know, the more, the more severe the program, I should say, the more needs for some of these students. You have, uh, Starbucks and you have Long Beach, you have different areas, Cosmos.
In Wilmer.
In Wilmer. So it depends on the grade or the level that these students need.
We have sent students all over the program over the course of time.
So where does the Cory go with all their kids then?
Um, I think Cory.
They're in the house, I thought.
I think they're in the house for the whole program. But again, they're just a much bigger program and we've belonged to the WCD for a long time.
Oh, yeah.
Certainly could be something we could look at.
Cory, we're two thousand kids now?
And if we were, I think. No, I guess I'm just looking at, I mean, because we do struggle for van, van drivers and stuff and that is.
Well, now that, at, um, uh, Painsville transfer now that helped too, that they took over.
A couple of runs.
A couple of our, but I'm just thinking if it would be like thirteen mile down the road.
Oh, a thirty mile down the road.
I mean, I don't, I mean, I.
I know Scott's task pretty well, we can certainly have a discussion with him on what to do.
I mean, it would just be.
I think that would be something that we want to absolutely have some discussion with the WCD about.
Oh, yeah.
So.
Well, no, I mean, I'm just, I guess I'm just looking for where, you know, A for our children, how far, you know, we're, because we're at risk for driving them, you know, when the weathers are in climate and stuff like that.
Some drive themselves and.
So, I mean, I guess, I know that we've been with them for a long time, but I think it's also maybe list by model of mine, but it would be interesting to see once.
Well, it's a good program. I, I see these kids come out of there and it's really, really beneficial.
No, and I, and I agree because I, you know, I do, I've seen this program forever to, you know, board for sixteen years or whatever. It's just, I'm just looking at, you know, A, we were struggling with driving, uh, drivers or van drivers and then B is, it's like third, third, third of the distance, you know? So, but.
Mark, can I comment on this or?
Uh, sure.
Can I just say from here, I attended the, uh, uh, graduation ceremonies in Wilmer for Beacon and the ALC and it was very moving. Uh, these people were, really beat the odds to get their degrees and diplomas and move on and I just had one, uh, that good as GED and that was just really one of my highlights of my year, to see that happen.
Anytime that you have that, those successes at no matter where you are, it's, it's cool.
Yeah, that's really good.
Yeah. So, but anyway. Thank you. Uh, any other boards hearing? All right, then I'm going to make a motion to a chair. 可以从. A motion from Lou. A motion from Heidi. Any other further discussion? All in, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Pull the same sign and carry.